You're muted, Tom, if you're trying to talk.
That's better. Maybe. Hey, Chad, Megan.
Evening.
Now you can see that.
Hand down.
All the way down.
Hello.
That's where we're at.
See Baker?
How are you feeling, Jim? Looking away.
Oh, there he is. Jimmy?
Hello.
Hey.
How's everybody else doing?
Good. Armed for a change after all the cold and wet. Hot and dry.
Hot.
Yeah.
Yeah, humidity's, well, it's not that humid, I guess, but I can definitely feel it. Nobody else's, the stylist was in town, just mine?
You have an advantage over many of us at the moment.
I don't know if it's an advantage.
It is now, wasn't then.
I swim faster.
Goodness, gonna have a thunderstorm. Mayor Tom, you had a question earlier in the week.
Yeah.
Probably a little over a week ago, and there was some delinquency, but it was all paid for.
Okay. Jim's caught up, right?
Quietly watching in the background every chance I can.
You are just quiet. I don't know if I like you on the Zoom. I can't keep an eye on you. Have you heard from anybody? Keith, I haven't heard from, Keith muted. Haven't heard from anybody? Okay.
Nope.
I'm gonna tell Mike on Facebook about the meeting, but he's not doing Facebook anymore, so I can't talk to him.
There's still texts, there's still email, there's still phone calls.
Hey, Tom Eldridge?
Yes.
Hey, I'm gonna test something here. We've got a new feature. I, well, actually says mute on here now for you. I'm gonna try to mute you real quick. It sounds like Zoom is not allowing us to mute people. It's asking to mute. But no, I was able to mute you.
Got it.
Test complete. Thanks.
Scott and Randall and John, you're still muted.
Am I there?
John is. They were missing Emily, I think. One, two, three, four.
No, Emily's here.
There she is.
And so is Travis.
Well, it's Travis. Yeah, I forgot about Travis in the pharmacy.
Um, when we're discussing the number seven and number eight, we have Director Scheid, Deputy, Deputy Chief Beeman, and I believe we are gonna have a DNR officer available also.
One minute I've got, folks, so we're all here.
Keith?
Yes, sir.
On that, on that, are they planning on having a DNR officer present when they do it like they have in the past anyways?
Yeah, we were gonna, I think Megan was gonna make reference to that during that item, yes.
Because I think that's the state part of their process, and then I think it would be kind of redundant to have an officer there unless there's, they had nothing else going on, just to go and watch or something, but.
Okay, perfect. We're ready. Let's call the meeting to order. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Rissman. I see ya. Councilmember Mackin.
Present.
Councilmember Johnson.
Present.
Councilmember Knack.
Here.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Here.
Councilmember Petsko.
Here.
Councilmember Hazel Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Houts.
Here.
And Mayor Kramer.
Present. We are all here. Next on our agenda is public comments. So if there's any public that have phoned in, you follow the instructions on the screen. Do we have any public phoned in, Pat? You know? You're muted, Pat.
No public is, well, we do have one person on the phone. I did want to make one quick comment myself. I want to introduce you to Sheila Puffenberg, our new IT manager. Said a lot of experience in the IT world. We're lucky to have her, and I'd like to bring her up real quick to, so you could get a lead in place.
Hello, everyone.
Sheila?
Hello. Pleasure to meet you.
Welcome.
Thank you. I have healthcare IT most recent background, and cybersecurity is a passion of mine to keep everybody safe and secure. Project management is kind of my forte to kind of keep things organized and aligned. So I'm here to help Pat and everyone else with whatever technology needs you have.
Thank you.
Thanks for having me.
Glad to have you.
Thank you.
And we're training Sheila up right now. She's actually gonna be running the ZBA meeting and the DDA meeting here, so.
Okay.
They're training her up to get ready.
Okay.
I don't see anybody having their hands up. I've got two people on the inside here from City Hall, and then I've got one other number. If you want to ask a question, please hit star nine on your telephone keypad, and we will open it up for you. No response, Tom, so.
Okay. We'll have public comment until the end of the meeting. If someone is listening and wishes to make a comment. Now we'll move into our consent agenda. These are items we consider to be routine. We'll take them in one motion unless one of us or someone in the public wants it removed for further clarification or discussion. Tonight, we've got our minutes of May 11, Water Housing Commission minutes of April 14, Merz Defying Benefit Statement for the Court of Indy, March 31, and the Moody Investment Service Report for April 15 of 2020. Those are the four items in our consent agenda. Do any of us want anything removed? If there's any public listening, if you wish star nine, please. Seeing none, we'd look for a motion to approve our consent agenda, please.
So moved Hazel Baker.
Support, Knack.
Okay, we have motion and support. Would the clerk, please take the roll call vote?
Yes. Councilmember Petsko.
Yes.
Councilmember Hazel Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Houts.
Yes.
Councilmember Rissman.
Yes.
Councilmember Mackin.
Yes.
Councilmember Mackin.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Knack.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Yes.
And Mayor Kramer.
Yes, motion carried. Number five, bills and accounts, $106,192. Tom, I saw him earlier. Tom's here, Keith's here. Questions on the bills? Anyone? If not, a motion to approve paying our bills, please.
Move to pay the bills, Beckwith. Support, Petsko.
Support.
Mackin.
Okay, we have motion and support. Again, would Sue please take the vote?
Yes. Councilmember Hazel Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Houts.
Yes.
Councilmember Rissman.
Yes.
Councilmember Mackin.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Knack.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Yes.
Councilmember Petsko.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes, motion carried. Number six, city manager report. Keith?
Thank you, Your Honor. Good evening, council members and everyone. Just run through my report that you have before you, and then I have an item to add at the end as well. And then if you have any questions of me afterwards, that as well. So first of all, I'd like to make reference to the fact that we have reopened the yard waste drop-off site that is at the DMS facility on 45 Industrial Avenue. We've gotten a lot of inquiries about that. In addition to just dropping off material, you can get free wood chips and compost from the site, and it is available to both city residents and township residents. Coldwater Township residents pay a fee to participate in that as well, and that facility is open from eight to four, Monday through Friday, and two to nine on Saturday. Secondly, quite a bit of social media traffic about absentee ballot applications. So Sue, our city clerk, was proactive in mailing absentee ballot applications to all the registered voters in the city, and then the state subsequently sent out that same list of people additional applications. So there again, this is just the application to vote absentee and for both the August and November elections, and for those that would wish to vote absentee in one of those elections, they just need to, they just need to return one of those, not both, to the city specifically. Any questions can be directed to Sue yesterday.
What was the reason those are sent out? I mean, why can't, I mean, why wasn't it just like it is normally when people request one?
Proactively in anticipation for having to possibly even required to vote when the August and November elections by not voting in person versus voting absentee. Sue, do you want to add to that?
Sure. In May, there were some elections across the state. We did not have, there were some elections, and the state chose pretty soon to the end of the time to do so, to send out applications to all registered voters who weren't already getting them at a permanent absentee voter. The state chose, they sent them out, and there were only about two and a half to three weeks for voters to receive them and get them turned back to get a ballot that then had to be sent, and it made it difficult for the municipalities that had elections. When they chose to do that, they also set up some different parameters for election day, including, I went and I observed over in Jackson County, one of the polling places, they, they set it up as all precincts under one roof. One precinct was technically open for all precincts, and everybody who came in and voted on election, they actually received an absentee ballot, and they processed it along those lines rather than the way we normally vote. And in knowing that this pandemic may or may not settle down, we may or may not keep our flattened, and may not end up voting in August and/or November like we did in May. To order, because the state didn't give us a whole lot of direction early on, I chose to order applications so that we would have enough for all of our voters. Our applications actually went out the day the state chose to do the same. They didn't let us know about them, and in the process, a lot of clerks were blind. When I heard about that same day, I called the state and I asked them, they were indeed going to. Finally got a response from them after the fact that for Coldwater, because we had done it, they probably won't do it, but I'm not certain that they got to quickly enough. Some, some people may get two applications, and keep in mind that the political parties and voter rights advocacies will sometimes also send applications out to our voters. So any of those that people get are usable. Just don't think that you have to turn them all back in. I've had a few confused. If you don't want to turn one in, you don't have to. If you want to go ahead and vote in person on election day, I can't promise that's how the state's gonna allow us to run our election. We're still figuring out what's gonna happen in August. So it was a, the idea was that it's not a ballot application, and people can choose to utilize it or not.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Sue. So next, I just want to make reference to the fact that the sidewalk project is underway. They are working, in fact, today on Perkins Street. They've been on, they've been on East Washington and South Hudson and East Pearl and that area in the last couple of weeks, and they'll be moving toward Morse and the second ward here in the next couple of weeks. So just be aware of that, and we ask people to leave the concrete alone and stay away from the contractors and the construction site. Next, I'd like to make reference to a couple grants that have been made available through our Downtown Development Authority. DDA is providing downtown COVID-19 assistance grants, and those are $500 grants. We cover up to 75% for costs incurred by businesses downtown in response to purchases or procedures or things in which they've had to do to make themselves ready for customers to return, and, and so many of that, much of that is in the way of PPE. Also, we're looking to encourage online, online alternatives for our downtown businesses, and so that's meant to help them get up and running that way as well. That information is on the city's website, and Audrey Tapperton can be contacted to apply. And there are, I know that there've been four that have been granted already, and there is funds available for that. Secondly, coming to the DDA tomorrow is the Matt Main Street program whereby the city will be applying for up to $50,000 for downtown businesses. We've taken applications, the way that the particular program worked, we had to have the applications for businesses first in order to apply to the state for the funds, and so those are being assembled by Audrey Tapperton and Lisa Miller, presented to the DDA tomorrow, and then approved for submission to the state. So we're hoping to assist. We have nine applicants under that program, and we believe we'll be able to fund all of those if we are to be awarded by the state for those funds. And so those are two programs currently underway. I think we've noted in the past that there's, there were three downtown businesses that were supported by our year, the grant program by the MUDC, and I know that there's been a number of businesses that have been assisted through the payroll protection program through our local lending institutions. So there has been quite a bit of assistance available, and we reach out directly, our staff has reached out directly to help those businesses that are interested in participating in that, in assisting to apply for those programs. Also on the grant fund is a Mr. Grant. So this is for the neighborhood around Central Park Drive and Seeley Street, Smith Street. I know that people probably don't recognize or know it as the Irwin Park neighborhood, but that was the actual plat for the area, and so that's where we generated the name. But in that neighborhood, there are home improvement grants available, and they can apply through the root services, and Dean Walrach is leading up that program. So that's up to just under $7,500 can be utilized per residence, and that is a grant, and so there are income qualifications, but we encourage people to apply for that, too. That is limited. We have $40,000 for that program through MISTO, but it's tied to then our modular house program helps make us eligible for that $40,000, with the idea being that in MISTO's helping support the construction of the modular house, they also want to help support the values of these properties around investment of the new home construction. There again, contact Neighborhood Services, Dean Walrach, and information is on the city's website. Lastly on the list, and then I have one new item, is property maintenance. So with the availability of landscape contractors until last weekend, better, better weather, after all the rain we had the previous weekend, we are doing code enforcement with quite a few properties with long grass, so we are still catching up to that. Just ask residents to keep their grass mowed, keep the junk picked up, and vehicles parked in the driveways. Then lastly, I was asked to make reference to the Allen Avenue project. I understand, I talked to the contractor today. They were supposedly out there today doing restarting the, the, the finished grading, some of the cleanup work, prepping for pavement, which is planned for next week. They will be paving this weekend, weather permitting, or this week, weather permitting, the turn lane on Race Street, which will provide for turn lane onto End Green Lane, and then next week would be the final paving, and the contract might be making the rounds. The three or four businesses out there, schedule that and to make them aware of that, but weather permitting and no contractor, further delays, that will be finished next week, and that's my manager's report.
Thank you, Keith. Questions for Keith? From anybody?
I do Keith on the neighborhood grant for Thompson over here. I was kind of questioning how many people might actually qualify because the income threshold's so low. And if, if nobody qualifies, because I've had a few people ask, but they don't qualify, would they change the qualifications if nobody applied, or that's it?
That I don't, the second part of that is I don't know. I mean, it is tied to your income. It is 120% of area median, so no, don't quote me on this, but I believe that, that qualifies someone over just under $51,000, so we want to, it just depends on a number of incomes per family, the number of people per family. Obviously, if you have a larger family, that's gonna be easier to meet than if smaller family.
I think that median was for like a family of three or four. It was like 26, I don't have a letter in front, but it was like 20, I got one of the letters, it was like 26,000 for a single person, 52, you know, and then it went up like, well, not evenly, but the, the numbers looked like the families that had two or three children that both people worked were over the amount, and then a few of the single people that were retired actually made more on their retirement type of a thing. I haven't spoke to everybody, just a few people. I didn't ask them.
With, with previous experience, I think if we had difficulty getting applicants or participants under that income limit, my previous experience with MISTO is that we can, we can widen the area, but they would still have to meet the income limit.
Just something to consider as we go forward, if nobody's, if you don't have any applications when we get closer to the deadline.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions for Keith? Anybody? If not, I think they would like a motion to approve the city manager's report.
Move to approve the city manager's report. Petsko?
Support.
Okay, whenever Sue's ready, would you please take the vote on that?
All right. Councilmember Houts. Councilmember Houts?
Yes.
Councilmember Rissman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mackin?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Knack?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckwith?
Yes.
Councilmember Petsko?
Yes.
Councilmember Hazel Baker?
Yes.
And Mayor Kramer.
Yes, motion carried. Number seven is a letter from Megan regarding amendment to chapter 698 Weapons and Explosives for the Purpose of Polling or Hunting Wild Animal. Megan?
So this is the second reading of this proposed ordinance change. If you recall, this came about because SAMA is having a lot of damage on their buildings from seagulls that have taken up residence over there. They went to the DNR and got a permit, a federal permit as well, because the seals are migratory birds, and they, however, they need to comply with local ordinance, and our local ordinance said does not give an exception for shooting guns inside the city for this purpose. And so looking around a little bit, we found that some other communities do, and we came up with this change to our ordinance that would allow the discharge of firearms inside the city in accordance with all other applicable law for the purpose of polling or hunting wild animals and subject to all restrictions that council might impose on this activity. So it, but these will always come back to council as, as the mute swans did for specific permission in each instance. So it's not, we're not giving a blanket license to shoot, discharge guns inside the city. And if you have, if you have had a chance to review it, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them. But otherwise, this is the moment to adopt or not adopt.
Megan, John?
Yeah, I have a question for you. Does the school system, if they're having an archery class, send something to the city to get approval, and does that come to council?
No, there's already an exception in our ordinance for the discharge of a bow and arrow as part of a class conducted by an educational institution. That was already in there. That wasn't an ad.
Okay. Okay, wasn't, wasn't quite sure, but thought, okay.
Any other questions? Not, they would look for a motion to either adopt or not adopt. I can't read the resolution, but this resolution.
Move to adopt Hazel Baker.
Support, Mackin.
We have motion and support. Any final questions? If not, Sue, would you please take the vote?
Yes, and this is for ordinance 831. Councilmember Rissman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mackin?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Knack?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckwith?
Yes.
Councilmember Petsko?
Yes.
Councilmember Hazel Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes, motion carried.
Oh, hold on, I didn't call Councilmember Houts.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carried again. Number eight, a letter from Joe Scheid regarding contract provision of a school resource officer. I believe you were on the line with us. I believe he was on the line with us. Or not.
Director Scheid, are you with us?
Hey, Joe, if you're on one of the phone calls there, could you raise your hand, hit star nine? There's two of them on here that could be him. I'm gonna just unmute them both and see. Joe, are you there? Joe, are you there?
This is Patrick Beaman. Joe is monitoring in the office next door. I don't know if he's having some trouble or not. I can bring him over here if you like.
Keith, you want to summarize this, or you want to wait for Joe? I mean, I think we remember what this is.
So there's been discussion with the school district and Director Scheid. Megan Angel have worked on an agreement between the school district and the city. To employ a full-time school resource officer. That full-time officer will be supported seventy-five percent by the district and twenty-five percent by the city. That was at the request of the school district initially, and we just feel so it would be a very beneficial program to both the city and the school district. This does actually spend quite a bit of time during the school year responding to instances out there for various reasons. And so in as much as we have, we have officers that respond on a regular basis. And we would want to encourage a better, a better coordination with that. And a person to, for them to become familiar with and to go to. We feel it would be a positive advantage or positive program for both the school district and the city. With that, I would defer to Megan on any of the technical aspects of the agreement. And Deputy Chief Beaman, Director Scheid, Ken Harris. Any questions related to how that would operate? Because we did get some questions about how that would operate between the school district and the city.
Go ahead.
I have a question. Was this funded similar, in a similar fashion the last time we had a school officer?
That I don't believe.
I believe I can answer that question. I don't have the exact specifics. This is Joe Scheid. There was some funding when the last school resource officer, which I believe was Tom Reed, was in that position. I think it was at a little bit different equation or a different rate. And that was one of the reasons why I think that program ended up being dissolved at the time. Was the funding by both parties was going to get very tight and was going to struggle. And so they decided to dissolve that program back then. So the funding at this, at this rate came up with a seventy-five percent and a twenty-five percent based on the kind of the school year. The school resource officer would be at the school for the school year, which is about, it comes out to be about seventy-five percent of the year. The other twenty-five percent, they still would be involved in some juvenile prevention type things and some stuff like that. But they would come back and be back to the city or back to the full-time police during the summer when they're off.
Other questions for Joe or Pat or Keith or Tom? If not, we'd look for adoption of resolution. I believe it's twenty sixteen and approval of agreement eight twenty oh five.
I would make that motion, Beckwith.
Second, Johnson.
Okay, we have a motion and support. Please take the vote on that.
Yes, Councilmember Macken?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Knack?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckwith?
Yes.
Councilmember Petsco?
Yes.
Councilmember Hazel Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember House?
Yes.
Councilmember Rissman?
Yes.
And Mayor Kramer?
Yes, motion carried. Number nine is a letter from Keith Baker regarding setting of the public hearing for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget. Keith?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just quickly, at the last meeting, we conducted a essentially a virtual budget workshop. So you got to see the nature of what we were proposing for a fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget. We're looking for your approval of resolution twenty dash twenty-one to set a public hearing for that budget. An itemized list you had included. At the next meeting, you'll have the full budget document and a transmittal letter. But you do have a draft budget within the packet, and we would just ask your, your approval of setting a public hearing for the next meeting. Which is Monday, June eighth at five thirty to conduct a public hearing and allow opportunity for the public to comment on the proposed city budget.
Okay, any questions for Keith? If not, a motion to adopt or not adopt that resolution.
Move to adopt, Hazel Baker.
Thank you, Randall.
Support, House.
We have a motion and support. Sue, please take the vote.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Knack?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckwith?
Yes.
Councilmember Petsco?
Yes.
Councilmember Hazel Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember House?
Yes.
Councilmember Rissman?
Yes.
Councilmember Macken?
Yes.
And Mayor Kramer?
Yes, motion carried. Number ten is a memo from Keith and Tom Eldridge regarding the second budget amendments for fiscal year nineteen twenty.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm going to turn it over to Tom to briefly go over the proposed changes and then be available for any questions.
Yes, good evening. As you know, or the members that have been on the council for a while now, we generally do two budget amendments a year. And the second one being in May, we kind of go through and do some catch-up. This year, provided, we've had a lot of challenges with the COVID crisis. But we've gone through and kind of right sizing the things that have happened, and then a couple of the other things that are going to be happening. The letter that you have, the memo, is reasonably self-explanatory, but let's go through a couple of the highlights. Prior to the amendment, we had a, an approved budget of two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars in the negative. What we're doing on the revenue side, as you see, we have reduced. Our, most of these are related to the recreation. As you know, the rec center has been closed since the middle of March, so there is no revenue coming in. In fact, we, and programs that are, would have been running right now received refunds. So we've reduced our rec revenue commensurate to essentially what is going on in the world today. Same thing with some rec concessions. Offset of that, of course, is that we don't have the rec expenditures happening right now that we would have been having. So we've, on the expenditure side, we've reduced our budget. Mainly for all the contractual types of things in the rec area that would have been going on. Namely, our part-time staff, various supplies. I've actually probably been very conservative there. We've, we've, we've cut about seventy-five thousand dollars out of what would have happened this spring. Some of the other major items on the expense side, we've taken a little bit of capital out. There are two items. At one time, we were planning to purchase a used aerial truck that is not going to be happening this year. And we were doing some work and maintenance in the DMS department that that is not happening as well. Regarding the mechanics room. And then we've taken a couple items that, a little bit out of the operational range, but things that have been discussed previously. Biggest item is the sidewalk project that's going on right now. That's something that was obviously discussed, but never was approved necessarily in the budget. It was approved by council, but not put into the budget, so we've added that project in there. As well as the money spent to date on the Four Corners Park. This is just approving what has happened with the engineer. No, obviously. Anything that hasn't happened is not included in things that happen. And then the other thing that we have added, again, for your review and approval, is fifty thousand dollars into our defined benefit retirement plan. That's something that we did last year. This is a payment on top of our originally budgeted amount. Not being done because anybody has caused some additional expenditures on our part, but it's just facing the reality that exists. This deficit exists out there for everybody in their defined benefit plans, and we're just trying to stay on top of it. Anything we pay in now reduces what we pay in later. So in summary, we've taken our two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollar deficit, reduced the operational part of it, but we've added some projects. And so right now, we're looking at a budget amount of three hundred and seventy-four thousand dollar loss. I think I can safely say that we will have expenditures that are under the budget. As everyone who knows, who has witnessed our budgets before understands. As well as, I think Keith has made you aware of. We get these payments from the state of Michigan as a reimbursement for our loss of personal property taxes. We only budgeted the amount this year that we knew we were going to get. And we didn't add anything to that budget essentially because of what's been going on. State, however, came through last Friday and Thursday and distributed two hundred and, we're going to call it now, essentially two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to us. That is not part of this amendment, but it is money that has arrived. It's actually in the bank. So I just wanted to make you aware of the fact that even though you're approving this budget, it will. The, the, the final outcome will not be this negative of that.
Let me see if I understand this right. The state of Michigan, who knows they've got billion dollars worth of shortfalls in the next couple of years. Sends us a quarter of a million dollars more than they need to this year. Is that?
Exactly. They, Tom, you're a hundred percent right. They've been doing this for a couple of years, as you know. We've continued to get excess funds. When they started this program, oh, I'm going to say four or five years ago, they made some forecasts. About what they felt manufacturers were going to do. They were very optimistic that a lot of these manufacturers were going to buy into their program. That hasn't quite worked out to the extent, it's worked out, but not to the extent that they felt they were going to get the participation. So every year, they end up with a pot of money that's been in excess of what was they needed to distribute. They have made the choice that every year, whatever they get, they've distributed. Unfortunately, I'll just be very clear, that this is all going to dry up. So we're getting the money now, and I guess we could say hopefully we're good stewards of the money. So we have the money now because we're not going to get it later.
Tom, can they get that money back from us?
Well, I made sure I didn't tell Keith about it until it actually hit the bank. How's that?
If I may, Your Honor. One, they have to, they have to distribute the funds to us because it's statutorily protected when that program was established. And so when that pot of money is created, it has to be distributed to the, to the local units of government. That, that those industries are paying taxes to. But as Tom referenced, if all those industries, once they either depreciate that equipment or cease to exist. That, that, those values, as it was originally designed, are supposed to go down. And so the money is supposed to, they're supposed to be less captured at the state level and reimbursed to the cities. But, but currently, we're still in this window of period of time in which they are capturing more than, than what they're, what the formula. Allows for the municipalities, and so then they redistribute it prorated to those municipalities.
Any other questions for Tom? Obviously, it's pretty routine housekeeping amendments. Any other questions? Not, I think they would like a motion to approve the budget amendments as presented.
Move to approve the budget amendments, Beckwith?
Support, Macken.
Okay, we have motion and support. Sue, once again.
Councilmember Knack?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckwith?
Yes.
Councilmember Petsco?
Yes.
Councilmember Hazel Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember House?
Yes.
Councilmember Rissman?
Yes.
Councilmember Macken?
Yes.
And Mayor Kramer?
Yes, motion carried. Keith, I do want to ask you, I guess, after the fact, but were any city staff? Other than the part-time temporary people put on unemployment? Like, I'm thinking of some of the rec, not Julie maybe, who had planning to, but did we make any layoffs, so to speak? Or cutbacks during a couple of months ago?
Yes, and we still have. So a rundown includes, we have three full-time recreation staff that are currently on furlough. We have three part-time police department records clerks on furlough. We have one part-time Neighborhood Services Administrative Assistant on furlough. We have our, one of our facility employees for, that's split fifty-fifty between the city and the BPU on furlough, full-time. And we have one full-time ASD, Customer Service Assistant on the, on the BP side on furlough.
Okay.
Okay. Keith, I had a question. Is MML projecting any kind of reductions in state funding in the future? Because of the, there's the shutdown?
Definitely. So within the budget that we're going to have a public hearing on, we're looking, we've, we've factored in, I believe it's a twenty percent reduction in our state shared revenue. We receive about one point one million dollars in state shared revenue annually, and so we've built that into what next year's budget looks like. It just depends on how long this goes, as to whether, you know, how far, much further that, that number moves. But as of the Revenue Estimating Conference that they had about a week ago, Tom has both made adjustments. In the budget amendments for this current fiscal year, and then we've made adjustments in what we projected in the, the new fiscal year to accommodate for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Not, we will move to public comments. Do we have any publics that would like to make a comment to council at this point?
We do have one caller on the line. If, if the caller would like to make a comment, please press star nine on your keypad now. I do have a couple of chats from the YouTube I could read off. Our Coldwater says, keeping Coldwater beautiful, I suggest looking in all places in Coldwater. Been a lot of trash by the dumpster between the new dairy queen and the buildings that housed the cottage in pizza. And the next comment is from our Coldwater as well. As well as needed to go to Quality Inn and see all the mattresses out behind the trash area. Both these areas have been longstanding in being this way. Those are the two comments on YouTube. I do have a hand up. So five one seven, your phone number starts with five one seven and is two six three. You're unmuted.
Hi, this is Nick Wellman, the State Conservation Officer from the DNR. I just wanted to say something real quick. Basically, thanks for passing that and making that easier for that company there. They've been having issues for several years. And I've been working with them constantly, trying to get everything they needed to do their, to do their thing and take care of that issue. So I have made sure that everybody that's going to be doing any of the shooting over there is. Going to be doing it in a safe manner, and they're going to be adhering to all federal and state guidelines for it. So everything will be taken care of over there, and if there's any issues, they'll go right, basically directly through me or obviously Coldwater PD. So shouldn't be any worries there.
Thank you, Nick. Thank you very much. Any other public comment?
Thank you. I don't see an opportunity for one. That was my last phone caller I don't know about.
Okay, we have a spot on our agenda now for unfinished council business. Anybody have any unfinished business? Any new business at council? And we'll just take a minute and give you necessary information if any of you are interested. Tomorrow at, I believe, 10 o'clock, Gay will have a meeting, Downtown Development Authority will have a meeting, which you're welcome to Zoom to. They will be looking to make a suggestion or recommendation for planning regarding what their belief about retail marijuana sales downtown will be. And also probably look at reducing it from 500,000 to 500. They'll probably talk about that. Just a recommendation to Planning Commission, but Keith, it's important the DDA weighed in on this. And then one day, I believe at 5:30, the Planning Commission will be addressing this also as per our direction to consider not only the Walmart commercial zone, but also consider downtown. By next Monday, both the DDA and the Planning Commission will have weighed in and have a recommendation also, I hope, at our first meeting in June. Is that somewhat accurate, Keith?
Yes, it was cutting out. So just to make sure that you heard that it was 10:00 AM tomorrow is the DDA meeting. Again, remotely on Zoom.
And the research has been done at this point, and we do not believe there's any impact to St. Charles School if there is a choice to reduce it from 1,000 to 500. I don't want to put Megan on the spot, but I know Ohio, I believe, is 500 from a school, and some states on the east coast are 300. So it was more of an enforcement tool than it was a funding thing for the school. So at this point, we don't believe that's a negative if those boards and or us would reduce that. Just FYI for your information. So tomorrow at 10 o'clock and Monday at 5:30, and we should see this in June. That makes sense to everybody somewhat? Okay. There's no other new business. We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Taff.